I'll call to order this joint meeting of the Election Board and the Board of Commissioners on December 20, 2021. And Commissioner Githens, do you have the agenda? Have you been able to?
Not yet. I'm looking. Sorry.
Well, I guess most of our purpose here is to see if you came to any kind of a decision in your work session.
And I guess that question was directed at me, I assume. And I just see that there's a message in the chat. Let me just check that. Okay, it's a message from Margie Rice, which says, "You do not have to have an agenda, but if you do have one, it should be shared with the public, and you may go ahead without an agenda." I guess let me check with Commissioner Githens. Does that work for you to move?
That would be excellent. Yeah, and I want to welcome Mr. Garlets. I hope he's now officially a member of the Election Board.
And yes, I can confirm that Mr. Garlets has been sworn in and is officially a member of the Election Board. Okay, well, let me then ask Clerk Brown or Member Garlets if they have any questions or comments.
I do. As we left our joint work set or our work session, I reached out to the Indiana Election Division about whether the vote needed to be unanimous or majority. So I wanted to read if I could the response that I received. You do need a unanimous approval by the County Election Board to establish a satellite early voting location. Also, those resolutions to establish satellite locations only last in the calendar year. So if we take a vote now, it will expire on December 31st. So the recommendation was, this is, this means that your board would need to adopt a resolution on January 1st or after to establish a satellite location, satellite locations for the 2022 election. If the Commissioners want a resolution from the Board to use the building today, then they would recommend that the resolution be generic. I apologize, my phone keeps, the screen keeps going away, that it would be generic like the Board approving the use of the building for election purposes. Then on or after January 1st, 2022, the Board can pass the satellite voting resolution to establish a location at the building. I'm hopeful that that made sense. I'm happy to read it again.
So may I ask, so it sounds as though you are thinking about using another location as a satellite? Is that?
This is about the Napa Building, Commissioner Githens, whether or not it needed to be unanimous or majority. So we ended our work session to give me a chance to reach out to the Indiana Election Division. And so the vote would have to be unanimous, and we can take a vote today if you like, but it will expire on December 31st.
Right, but that, my question is, is it that your intention is in 2022 to use the Napa Building for a satellite location, or will it be used for some other part of the election function?
What we talked about on the previous meeting was voting on it being a satellite location, but also I have recommended to the Board that we have on our agenda additional satellite locations to be discussed in January.
And I guess Clerk Brown, I understand what you just read off as saying that as of right now, we can just, if we wanted to vote on something, it could only be something generic, and that we'd have to reconvene and take another vote in January.
Correct.
So may I ask, also in conjunction with that, then, will you be wanting to have any other functions at the Napa Building or at showers or, you know, the other locations we've discussed? And what kind of security do we need to be talking about?
So what I had requested on a previous meeting, we have some security recommendations. I would prefer to not discuss those on a public meeting. And I appreciate your agreeing. And so my hope is, I sent my recommendations to the Election Board members with a request for what they wanted as well, and then we present a master list to Mr. Kron, so that he can have that. That was the purpose of our wanting to have an executive meeting, and we'd actually requested guidance from the IED at our election conference last week. We were told that discussion of security features is a reason to have an executive session. And so, but then the advice that we were given on Friday from the attorney for the clerk was that we not have an executive session. So we didn't feel at all comfortable discussing security measures on our session because it was not an executive session. Thank you.
And I would add to that, I guess I'm very confused about why we were requested to not have an executive session, because, you know, we noted that we wanted to discuss security. And I guess Commissioner Githens, can you let us know if you had reached out to the attorney, or just why there was a request that we not have our executive meeting to discuss security concerns?
This was just on the advice of legal counsel. Margie, can you weigh in, please?
No, I was not part of that conversation, but I can tell you that I am familiar with the open door law. And having a conversation about security is not one of the stated exceptions to the open door law. So the open door law is to be construed favorably towards opening the door and allowing the public to hear your conversation. There are very limited reasons to have an executive session. You can for litigation, you can to discuss employment decisions, but, but final decisions have to be taken in a public meeting. There are few other exceptions. I have never heard of an exception for discussing security.
So that's not my understanding of either the law or what Mr. Baker told us.
I can chime in if you like. That statement is demonstrably false. The executive session clearly states that security can be discussed in an executive session, as well as the purchase or lease of real property, which is what we had checked the boxes for in our potential executive session that we wanted to have this morning to talk about those things. But I apologize, and I hate to come off so strong, but that's completely false. That's not true.
Okay, I can look back at it and see if there's an exception that I've missed. Now, I, clearly, if you want to discuss the purchase of real estate, that's an exception. That's not what you guys said. You said security, then you added the, the property issue. So again, I was not part of the conversation last week. It's my understanding, somebody just said on this meeting that Mr. Baker said you could not have an executive session, and somebody at the state said that you could. Could you share that, what, what the state had said?
I'm happy to clear that up if you guys would like me to. Okay, sorry. So at our meeting, for transparency purposes, I am very, very well-versed in open door law. Not only in my former life was I a school administrator who deals very extensively with ODL due to school boards, which are one of the most sought-after open-door meetings that there can be, but I was also a mayoral appointee to a redevelopment commission in northern Indiana, and never have I heard so much pushback against an executive session when they fall very clearly within the narrow scope of what's acceptable in an executive session. So hearing that there was pushback from that, not only did I go on my own during my three-day meeting in Indianapolis and ask IED, but the president, executive director, whatever his title might be, of public access, the public access counselor, made it very clear in his presentation what was available. So on Friday, I'm sorry, on Thursday, as we were leading up to the 48-hour notice requirement for an executive, a work session, or even an open meeting, Attorney Baker reached out to us, and I opted to take that phone call. And he reached out with email, and then I opted to call him. I should clarify there. And he did not say we could not have a meeting for security. He was advising that we did not have a meeting to discuss the lease or purchase of real property, and his words were, because we, as a Board, did not purchase or lease real property. Now, I think that's a bit of a gray area, as it's my understanding that we do pay for not only renovations in the past, but leasing of buildings, or whatever that might be. But both of those scenarios, in terms of us, you know, checking those boxes, were brought up not only to PAC but to IED. And in those hypotheticals, they both said there was no issue whatsoever. Being that we were in a time crunch, I then reached out to Ms. Wheeler and to my fellow Board members and said, "We should probably just change it to a work session on advice of counsel, and we'll go from there." I disagree. I make that public. I told Mr. Baker I disagreed with that, but I don't think that it was the proper time, and I don't think we had enough allotted time to argue the point when we needed to have a session to at least bring myself. But my understanding is Chairman, Chairwoman Rana, up to speed on everything that has transpired over the last however long. So to be clear, that's, that's exactly what happened. But I, it is, again, absolutely not true that you cannot have an executive to discuss security reasons. That doesn't even make sense that you would discuss security reasons in a public session.
I'm, Margie, I'm looking at the email that Mr. Baker sent, and he said that the Election Board could meet an executive session to discuss implementation of security systems, if that is in fact what they want to discuss. So if I read his email, it said they could have an executive session for security, but not for any decisions related to whether or not they wanted to use the Napa Building for any kind of a purpose related to elections. And, and I think we're getting, I would like to bring us back to where we can have agreement on stuff, and instead of the kind of tone that we have right now. Is it the intent of the Election Board to use Napa for some kind of election purpose in 2022? And is there a desire to use any part of showers building also in 2022? Because we want to be working with you to do whatever is appropriate for the security, because we want to maintain the security of the election process.
Well, I would like to read an email into the record, because I think it's extremely important to correct the record, even what, you know, what has just been said by the people on the call. So I want to read, we got an email from Lee Baker on Thursday, December 16th, at 8:48 a.m. to me, Mr. Garlets, and Clerk Brown, which says, "Good morning, all. I'm informed that the Election Board plans to hold an executive session on Monday morning." And then he goes through part of the Indiana Open Door Law, and then followed by, "The limited circumstances in which a body that is subject to the requirements of the ODL, e.g. the Election Board, may hold an executive session are set forth under Indiana Code, Section 5-14-1.5 to 6.1B." And then Section 6.1B states, "Executive sessions may be held only in the following instances." And under that, Part 2 says, "For a discussion of strategy with respect to any of the following." And after following, there's a semicolon, and then it says, Part C says, "The implementation of security systems." Then Part D says, "A real property transaction, including roman numeral I, a purchase, II, a lease as a lessor, and then III, a lease as lessy, IV, a transfer, V, an exchange, or VI, a sale by the governing body up to the time a contract or option is executed by the party." And then it goes on to other provisions. So I think very clear, and we quoted this statute when noticing our executive meeting, and clearly stated both that we wanted to discuss the implementation of security systems, as well as a real property transaction, including transfers, leases, et cetera.
Okay, well, the Election Board's not empowered to do any kind of real property transfer, is my understanding. That is solely the purview of the Commissioners working with our County Council. But you don't sign a lease, you don't purchase a property. But I agree with you completely, Professor Rana, that you are allowed to meet under this code, and I believe that that's what I said just a few minutes ago, that you are allowed to meet in that, under this section, to discuss security. I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding about that, and I'm sorry if the, kind of the parameters that each of us have to follow, you know, it does get fuzzy at times. That's not our intention, but what we're trying to do here today, rather than discuss whether or not you should have been allowed to have an executive session, which I believe that you can do to figure out whatever security you want, is that we need to know about what you want to have in use for 2022 that is owned by the county.
Well, I guess our concern is that we've been prevented from meeting to discuss security and other concerns, and I think misstated what's in the code, but I'll, that I just read out, but I'll keep going. And, you know, that, um...
No, Mr. Baker, later in the morning at, I'm sorry, at 9:24 on last Thursday morning, said that, I'm sorry, that's the wrong time. At 9:53, said he had a telephone conversation with Karen, explaining that the Executive Board cannot meet an executive session to discuss the matter of a property transfer, as the Election Board would not be a party to a property transfer, which is just what I just said. But he said, "I did offer that the Election Board can meet in executive session to discuss the implementation of security systems." That came after the, what you're just referring to. But, but please, can we just, please, go ahead and have an executive session to discuss security? That's allowed. That's clear. But also, it's that we need to know what property that belongs to the county that you want to have available, so that we can start to work with you, which is what our desire is, to work with you to make those space not only available, but make sure that it is secure, so that we can work with you on whether it's locks, or cameras, or whatever it is.
So I, let me chime in here. I think it's important to note that that's exactly what I said with respect to Mr. Baker. He, that there's no dispute there. I think part of the concern is that the reason we checked those boxes is because myself personally, and I'm speaking for myself now, I wasn't even aware of what buildings were available to us. And it is impossible to make a decision in a half hour, an hour, however much time. I didn't even know until 10:30 this morning that this meeting wasn't slated for 11:00, so I was under the assumption that we only had a half hour. But it's impossible to make a decision not only on the space that we are in need of, or even have available to us, but then also turn around and discuss security. So the reason and the intent for the executive session, just to be crystal clear, was to discuss what options are available, have been presented to the Election Board for use, and thereafter, discuss the security issues and/or needs at those various locations. I don't think it is even remotely in question that any three of us don't understand that votes cannot be taken, that we don't understand what the need or meaning of an executive session is. Again, it was clearly and fully information gathering, and I don't know that any three of us now, after just having our work session, I'm not speaking for anyone else, but this is an assumption, and certainly how I feel, I'm not sure how we can, other than make a motion to accept all available options right now, how can we know what we want to utilize if we don't even, haven't even flushed out what the security issues may be, which are many at the Napa Building? And I'm not even aware what might be at showers, should we decide to use that? So, I mean, if we're, if we're here to just blanket, accept everything that's out there on the table, which seems to me only is Napa nor showers at this point, in addition to Johnson Building right now, I'm happy to make that motion. But I don't know what that motion would entail in terms of other, again, other than just saying, "We accept the use of these buildings for a purpose to be discussed and voted on at a later dict." I mean, that's, that's the only thing I can think of in my head that makes any sense right now.
And, you know, I would just add, we've been trying so hard to understand everything we need to, to make the best decision possible, and we just came off a three-day election meeting, election administrators conference, where, you know, we were trained in how elections work, and, you know, and, as I said, have just been trying really hard to understand everything that's happened, but also everything that we need to think about to make this upcoming election and future elections run as well as possible. And we've just been, you know, and, you know, and we really want to look at compromises, solutions, all sorts of different things, and all we've gotten is hostility from the Commissioners, to the point where we set out a legally acceptable basis for the executive session that we want to have to discuss pressing security concerns, which we know will be pressing for the upcoming elections, and we just get threats thrown back in our faces every time we try to do anything at all, or even just move forward in any way, you know, in ways, I just, I just can't even believe that somebody called the, like, we properly noticed an executive session, you know, following the law, and someone apparently called the city attorney and asked them to call us and not hold the executive session. I'm just, you know, appalled at that whole scenario, and just don't even understand why that is happening, and who is doing that, and why.
Well, do you have a proposal on the table for us in terms of what buildings you want to use, in terms of the space that the County has offered? Like I said, we do want to work with you. I, we can't move forward unless we know what you want at this point.
So, Mr. Donovan, I understood you to have put a motion on the table that lines up with the recommendation we have from the Indiana Election Division, which is a generic resolution that the Board approves the use of the two buildings for, and I understand those two buildings to be the Napa Building and the north end of the showers building in a generic manner for election purposes. That will get us through the year. It won't, it wouldn't expire on December 31st, and then that allows us to go ahead and have this security concerns and security review executive session, our regular Election Board meeting, so that we can consider additional satellite facilities. And if you are making that motion, I will second that motion.
I believe that's the only motion that we can make, is to accept all available spaces with no predetermined name or assignment, but rather for election purposes, as stated by Clerk Brown, I would move for that.
Okay, and do I have a second for that motion?
Yes, you do. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess, can we have a roll call?
Chairman Rana?
Yes.
Clerk Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Garlets?
Yes.
And the motion is passed, 3 to 0.
Fabulous. Thank you. Thank you all. I, I saw, I apologize, because I saw something about, that Ms. Wheeler had a question about, I'm not sure, ICD 9-8 or something, was that?
Yes. So you guys did sign, the Commissioners did sign off on the proposal for the re-presincting, but then there was basically a couple typos, and so it needed to be redone, which it has been, and I think you guys have it. If not, we can send it to you again. And so we need that to be signed, if at all possible, today, because then it needs to go to the Office of Census Data, then to the co-directors at the IED, and then back to me, and published, and it has to be published by Christmas, December 25th. Love that deadline.
Is there something that needs a wet signature, or can we do an electronic signature?
Good question. Maybe Margie would know that. You know, Margie, since you're there, I'm hoping you can still hear me. You know, they signed off, we have the copy of the other one, and Jared's also on here, and he can probably help me if I'm saying this wrong. But with the corrections of the IEC 8s, I don't know, as long as the Commissioners know, couldn't we use that form that they already signed and attached it to the new IEC 8s? Would that work, Margie?
Yeah, often, the Commissioners, I think that would work, and often the Commissioners will ratify decisions. So, you know, this could be placed on their, I know you've got this deadline in December, but the Commissioners aren't meeting. So I'm going to throw out there the idea that the Commissioners could ratify this at their January 5th meeting. So go with your plan, Karen, and then it can be ratified. And Penny's nodding her head. Penny, do you think that will work?
Yes, I'm more than happy to do that. Or if we need to, since this is a joint meeting, can we, can Commissioner Jones and I have a motion and a vote to ratify it?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, you guys, you don't have, again, you don't have to have, you know, advance notice to discuss an issue. You're, you did notice this public meeting, and it's a public meeting, so you could, you can vote on that now. And then, you know, you could take it again to the full Board for discussion on January 5th.
And I can explain the corrections if you need to know them, probably, or I think it's been sent to you, but if you want it on this public meeting.
If, if you feel that's appropriate, please.
Sure. So on the IEs, IE, that's so hard for me to say, IEC 8s, they all got, you had to put down the precincts that were, that how many precincts are in Monroe County? And it was 82, and so we got to our last one, because we kind of changed things up, and then we're adding Bean Blossom 3. So those IECs, two of them, got the number 83, but they all need to be 83. So it's just the difference of how many precincts we will have if this is all approved. And then the other one was just a missed blank, that with the Bean Blossom 3, it asks for online 11, which precincts are affected, which is Bean Blossom 1 and Bean Blossom 3. And the state missed it, and we missed it, too. So it's just kind of a simple little thing, but it's held us up now.
Then I move that the Board of Commissioners ratify or approve the corrections made to the IEC 8s, so that they can be forwarded to the State Election Division.
Okay.
I don't have any discussion. Does anybody else?
No, I don't.
I think the way Ms. Wheeler explained it is very straightforward. Margie, could you call the roll?
Me, too. Commissioner Githens?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
I pass it unanimously by the members of the commissioners present.
And we can, we can always do an electronic signature if you can get it sent to us. Um, we can do that, you know, pretty instantaneously, if that's, if that's allowed. Uh, if not, I will drive down this afternoon to your office and sign it.
Okay, Jared, do you think you can just take what we have then and submit that with their old signatures?
Uh, so I just um emailed her that we are good based off of what we discussed and that we will get an actual signed document here soon. Um, the original order was e-signed, so I think that it shouldn't be a problem. Um, so I think I'll. I'll make the corrections on uh on a fresh paper and then get those over to Margie today to send to you guys.
Thank you.
All right, and then I had one other thing, just a question for you commissioners. And that is about the county council district changes, was there an order signed on that?
I believe there was.
Yes.
I don't remember the date.
Yes, there was, um, and I think it was meeting before our last one.
Okay, so I just need to do some other things, but that has to be done first. I don't necessarily have to have a copy of it, I just need to know that the order has been sent through. So if you've done it, that's great for my, for my ears.
So that would have been at our meeting on um, I believe, December the eighth.
Okay.
All right, so then we can start making changes in S V R S according to those changes that we've done with the districts.
Great. Thank you. I there, I I realized there's still the issue that um about the security. Um, like I said, we want to work with you, we want to secure the elections, we want them to go forward as smoothly as possible. And as securely as possible, so um when you're able to get that information to Mr. Crone, who's on the call. Uh, we will work with him and with you to uh make sure that that happens.
Uh, may I ask some additional questions?
Please.
So, um, for the commissioners that are present, I I think, um, you know, again, part of my intention here is to really be caught up. And and be brought up to speed on everything that's transpired and. I kind of take everything that I've heard, you know, through the grapevine, whether it be from the public or employees or anything with a grain of salt. So I just, I I hope to hear it uh directly from you guys in terms of uh what we need. To present to you in the future, um, as we heard matter of factly at the December ninth meeting that the Johnson Building was not up for discussion in terms of expansion. Um, I would like to offer up, um, as I did previously, you know, forty five minutes, an hour ago at this point. You know what, multiple other commissioners from other county, or I apologize, clerks from other counties, board members from other counties. I E D themselves um presented as almost a unanimous uh message of being under one roof for for multiple things. So this uh, albeit a solution, seems like a Band-Aid solution as we move to the potential use of these other buildings. So what do the commissioners need from us as a board? Um, in addition to what they may have already received, which I understand is a spatial assessment by by Lamar. Um, some verbal and or written requests in various meetings in the past. Um, anything other than that I'm not aware of uh that may have transpired. But what else do you need from us in terms of information to get to you to um? Not only present to you that need, but also are you willing to even listen and commit to getting. Uh, all of election under one roof uh in Monroe County?
Well, I believe what was said was that we weren't in a position to uh. Provide all of Johnson Hardware Building for twenty twenty two.
Yes.
Okay, um, we do need. Definitive numbers on space needs, um, and that spelled out um in terms of. You know, I've I've asked a couple different times now, we don't know what your storage needs are. We'd, you know, I just saw in today's paper that um the, what was the old train station downtown? Uh, which is right, right near you, um, sold for, sorry, I'm sorry, things keep digging here. Sold for a million dollars, um, you know, right, right next to where the election offices are. We are not in a position to be buying really expensive property in downtown Bloomington. Um, and if uh, if we had a very. A very detailed understanding of what the exact different space needs are. You know, I don't know how much space you use, for example, for storing um marked counted ballots. Um, is it, does it make more sense to store those offsite? Because they are already verified and have gone through a process rather than using very expensive downtown space. To store those, I mean, so that's why I had asked for what is stored where, how much, you know, storage is needed for these, each of those items.
May I interject something here, please?
Of course.
Clerk Brown. I, so I'm hopeful that you'll recall that uh Mr. Garland's predecessor suggested that the election board present. The architect's spatial assessment. And that is serve as our response to you regarding our space needs, and I have done that. Um, are you saying that was not adequate in terms of, I thought he did an amazing job of articulating our needs? And and I even got him to translate square feet into cubic square feet as you had requested, as the board had requested. Are you saying that that was not sufficient?
Well, I I've read through what you sent, thank you for sharing that, um. I was a little confused by by it because I thought he indicated there were going to be three different scenarios in it and I only saw two. But also, it didn't answer my question about how much space is needed to store marked ballots, how much space is needed to store. Um, the voting machines, how much space is needed to store the E poll books? Um, laying out how you would use the space for me is very different from what those space needs truly are.
I believe he can help us with that and I'm happy to reach back out to him. To get you those numbers.
So cur- so currently you guys have in hand the spatial needs in terms of of square footage and Clerk Brown, if you could. Uh, could you repeat, what were you asking about square footage versus cubic footage? What was that request?
The the commissioners, one of their request was rather than outline what we needed in terms of square footage. That we give them cubic square feet and I was able to get the architect. To provide that column of numbers in addition to the square footage, they gave the cubic square footage. Um. Did I make that make sense?
Yeah, may maybe one of the commissioners can help flush that out, what, could you help me understand what that was in reference to specifically? But in addition to that, um. Wh- what I'd like to know is, so storage is number one, what the needs are. And then with the square footage assessment or the space assessment and needs. Uh, you're asking for what that space would be used for in addition to um just the request or the the assessment itself, is that correct?
Well, we need to understand what what the space needs are. And it might be that the Johnson Hardware Building is not even an optimal space. For for, you know, the election. Kind of offices to to be placed in. Um, the stuff about the cubic square footage, you can describe, you know, uh, a storage unit that is ten by ten feet square. But I don't know if you've taken two feet on that ten by ten feet to store things or eight feet. So that's why the cubic feet may made a difference, um, to help us understand whether you're stacking things all the way to the ceiling or, you know, just a few inches on the floor.
So that's specifically in relation to the storage aspect of the question.
Exactly, yes, yes, yes.
All right, Orton, I mean, I thi- I think that uh, that that's reasonable. So it it sounds to me that, you know, we need to flush out this storage uh needs and then also add, you know, what specifically that square footage that's already been presented. Uh, will be used for and how, and so with that said, if we get get you all that information, um, what do we need to do? And I I I think it would be um frankly silly to purchase a million dollar building uh right next door that's smaller. Um, that that does, right, that doesn't make sense, but I think, you know, if we're looking long term. Um, with the understanding that everything in government is temporary, uh, a more permanent home for all of these spaces. Uh, combined, as mentioned, as the best practice by pretty much everyone. Um, that that we've, that I personally have discussed with, that are in similar positions as Clerk Brown and myself as a board member. And then obviously the leaders of the election division at state, so um, that was just my, I I just wanted to know what else you guys were looking for in terms of information.
Yeah, it it's amazing to me when I think back that originally all of all the functions of county government pretty much were in our courthouse. Right, I mean, seriously, they were all in that courthouse, including the court that was up on the the third floor. Um, and now we have our justice building, we have offices in the Curry Building and. Uh, we have a highway department that's way out west, I mean, we've got the airport, all kinds of things that are part of the the county's functioning. That are no longer in that that single building. And so, you know, when I had looked around at some of the other counties also, their courthouses are huge compared to ours. And so it is easier, I think, in those circumstances to have everything under one roof. But we don't have that kind of space, and so it's trying to juggle and work with people to come up with. Maybe not what is optimal, but what we can all live with.
And I just wanted to add that I completely understand requesting um. Information on space needs and clarifications and all of those, which I think there's been, you know, lots of back and forth. Meetings that I have the um, you know, the work sessions, the election board meetings and the commissioner meetings that I have attended. Um, and I think, you know, I've always seen that Clerk Brown is quite happy to provide um whatever information is requested. But I also want to make the point that I think, you know, at some point, it's important to defer to the clerk's expertise on how. She wants to use the building and how she arranges space. Um, you know, it's not for me, for example, to micromanage whether election equipment is six inches from the wall. Or is stored three inches from the wall or something like that. And I just don't want to go down that rabbit hole of, you know, again, I think clarifications are completely, um, you know. It's it's important to ask for clarifications when needed, but um I think the clerk has provided a lot of information about how her, about space needs and how she plans. To use them and I just want, don't want us to go down, you know, the sort of infinite rabbit hole of like more and more precise and specific information. Um, you know, when she's provided, um, you know, her basic space needs and why she's making the request that she's making. So I just wanted to avoid that perception and avoid doing that in the future as well. Um, you know, given that it's Clerk Brown who has the expertise and the ability to decide, you know, where she wants to put the furniture in her office. Or what she thinks would be the, you know, the best ways to move people through a building for the purposes of election security or um convenience, right? She's the expert on elections, not um, you know, members of the general public or others. And um, you know, she has sought and we have sought expert opinions, you know, where where necessary.
Um, I would like to make one request, um. Mr. Garlets and um others have referred to uh what are best practices, are those in writing anywhere that we could have a copy of?
Thank you for that question, so largely as um, as we just came from last week, the election in. Administration Conference, I've learned a lot of this from working with other colleagues and from the people who presented our conference. We actually do have someone from CISA under the Department of Homeland Security uh gathering that written. That written commentary for you, um, and then he is, I actually saw him at the conference last week. And he will be coming to Election Central to do an assessment for us, um, but. As, you know, I I spoke with him at great length about what's been going on here in Monroe County and what we were requesting and why. And I, you know, it 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 comes back to something very simple, it's easier to keep all eyes on one area as opposed to five. Um, you know, you you're looking here, there and everywhere for your equipment, that that is not best practice. Um, and he will, he, what he indicated was, following his site visit, he will prepare something written. That I can present to the election board, but that is something that, you know, he he acknowledged he wasn't available in December. It's not going to come any sooner than January, um, we do the best that we can to get you the information in as timely. A manner as possible, but some things, you know, I don't just get to call up Department of Homeland Security and say, hey, the commissioners want this and I need it yesterday. That's not quite how it works.
Understood, understood, so do we have a timeline then for um getting things taken care of for twenty twenty two?
I I think the soonest, the fairest thing to say is that we understand the parameters today, what we were allowed to vote on, what we still need to do. Um, and I, we definitely have a January election board meeting. Um, sounds like we're gonna schedule an executive meeting to discuss security. Um, I am working with CISA to get the site visit scheduled. And I'm happy to reach at, reach back out, circle back to the architect as far as outlining our storage needs. Um, so that we can get that number to you, um, so. I I would say the timeline at least will be, will have a healthy grasp on things in January, but I can't promise anything sooner than that. Just based on what we've discussed today.
Okay, well, with, uh, again, you know, you've heard us say this before, we we want to get this moving as quickly as possible, knowing that COVID has really thrown a wrench into. Supply chains and availability of people to do the work and things like that, so.
Understood, and and I had always suggested January, even before knowing that anything we would vote on would expire on December thirty first of this year. I had always suggested January, we felt the pressure to give you something prior to the holidays. Um, and that's what we have tried to do for you and we have to the best of our ability.
Thank you, thank you. Well, does, for the good of the order, does anybody have, anyone else have anything they'd like to raise today? Then if not, um, please let us know if you want another joint meeting. And please let us know how quickly uh you have some decisions made so that we can act on them. Um, and uh, thank you for your time today. And I'm sorry that there was some misunderstanding about whether or not you could have an executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you all, have a, have a great holiday, I hope, hope, hopefully, hopefully all get some rest with what's coming up. Thank you all.
Thank you.